All right, good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of April 9th, 2019. And we'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to our agenda?
We may. On number three, the celebration of learning, we were going to have John Hobart and perhaps his wife Anne Solnier speak to you a little bit. If they show up, we'll probably let them. If they show up before we get going, we'll put them in there. If not, we'll have them go after Dick Neal. And just two quick ones at the front end. Kim's on her way to England to see her grandbaby and her flight, she has to be in Boston by six, so she's not here tonight. And Jen will be taking notes from the video. She is got a sinus infection.
I hope she left at one.
She was, yeah, she'll make it.
All right, then we'll move on to number two. Any comments from the public?
Get to this guy.
Okay, then we'll move on to number three, which is our celebration of learning. And I will turn it over to Mr. Ross, who invited Mr. Neal to come and join.
Probably most of you know Dick Neal is our neighbor and friend for many, many years, just over the bridge at the farm. And I guess it was three, maybe three years ago you must have moved, because when I met you, you had just moved to Sanford, I think from that home. And for many years, Dick has been a supporter and a good friend to Acton Elementary School and quite the local historian. So, we talked earlier and he's been kind of working on this book. And I said, well, boy, when this book kind of gets put together, I'm gonna have, we're gonna have to really do something fun with it. So, been a couple of years we've been going back and forth. And then he sent me a file and he said, why don't you hold on to this? And gave me the Justin K. speech. Well, I didn't quite sure what that meant, but I didn't have to do anything with that file that Dick sent me, because it turned into this book.
Nice.
Okay, so this is pretty cool. It's all about us. And Dick's here tonight just to talk to you a little bit about his book. We had a chance to debrief about the book and kind of what, where the proceeds go and whatnot, but I thought it was really important. Seems that you are the Acton School Committee, that you hear from our new author right here about our, the history of Acton schools, past and present. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Dick. Is this being used? Do you want to move?
Yeah, okay, I'll get out of the way.
It's not working. I bet you're in the way, it's just not connecting.
No problem.
I'd like to thank Mr. Ross for inviting me to address you folks tonight. Yeah, I spent 29 years here, for those that don't know. And in the old farm next door, the, happens to be one of the oldest farms and buildings in the town of Acton. The person that turned around and built it and lived there, 1785. So, I would say, there's a lot of history in the house. And the, so about, twenty few years ago, the, I got involved with the Acton Chapley Historical Society and kind of got, see what's going on and, you know, I get more and more interested in what was about the history. And then, one day, lady, friend of mine, Mrs. Bragg, Claire Bragg, lives up on Acton Ridge Road, and she called me up and she says, Dick, I'm almost 90 years old and I'm cleaning out my closets. I come across this box of old town reports. And I didn't know what to do with them. I hate to throw them away. I asked her, I said, would you be interested in donating them to the Acton Chapley Historical Society? She said, oh, yeah, sure, that's a good idea. So, I said, okay, I'll be up to get them. I went up, picked them up, brought them home, and before I brought them down to the Historical Society, curiosity got the best of me. And I went out, the car, got the box of books, brought them up, my porch, and I started laying them out chronologically on the floor. To whom behold, guess what? They went all the way back to 1869.
Wow, unbelievable.
From 2013 back to 1869, and there were only eight of 10 missing out of 145 years. So, I went up to the town hall and I talked to Lorraine Yetton, along, friend of mine and fellow selectmen. And she was really interested. She says, oh, I'll put, in my article, she's writing for the Sanford News at the time, and so she put in her article about what I'd done and listed the years that were missing. I went back up to her office about a week or so later, and lo and behold, sitting on her desk with the missing records. So, I would say, as I started researching back, of course, each one of these town reports have superintendent's report.
Oh.
And that became very, very interesting and time consuming. But, so, I got the idea of putting the thing, and I checked with the school about that time, and I asked the question, do any of the teachers teach anything about the history of Acton or about the schools of Acton? No. And I thought, oh, my Lord, kids are gonna grow up, go through the eighth grade, not get any history. If they go to high school, then now they're gonna go to Sanford or Burke Academy or Kennybunk or some other place. If they have a course on local history, it's gonna be about schools or the history of those towns, not about Acton. So, that really got me going. So, I embarked on the thing of trying to put together and doing research for this book. Took it quite a while, and I finally run out of gas about all this past year. Another thing that interrupted my train of thought along the line here was that I lost my wife about two years ago. And so, that kind of gets you thinking about other things and lose your track on here. So, I decided to finish it up, and I got it issued about a month ago, published. It's available on amazon.com, and they throw it for $18. There's also copies at the Acton Library, if anyone is interested. And so, as I say, if you want, just take a couple of minutes, we'll just kind of run through, so you get an idea of what's in the book, okay? Okay, Mike? This is the table of contents. Now, I don't have slides of everything you see on there. They'd be too time consuming to go through, you know, the printed words and the thing. But in chapter one, I happened to be searching on the internet, and I went to the state of Maine Board of Education and looking to see what they may have for history. And I tucked away in a, with a link, there was a thing about early years of education in Maine. And I contacted them and asked them if they had any problem with me using it in my book. So, this kind of give you, this chapter give you a background of education way back in the early 1700s right up through and how things developed. The next one, oh, the, chapter two, we go into the Acton Historic School Districts. The, we'll go down through there, I think we have pictures of most of the schools. And then all of a sudden, chapter three is the New Consolidated School, built in 1957. Then, one of the things at the Historical Society, I kind of cross a bunch of notes about some of the teachers that taught maybe over 100 years ago. And I just was totally amazed, I really found them interesting, and so I included those in there and see what a teacher did back four hundred years, working in a one-room schoolhouse. So, then, the, then in the last chapter, there's interesting comments that I found in the superintendent's report, that I found interesting in reading them over the years. And it's real interesting, the superintendent, back in those days, they weren't bashful when they wrote up their annual report. They had a bad teacher, he put in there, not doing her job, and supervises the school, he had to turn around. Just one more. Where do you want it? Let me find it here. In 1881, it is sincerely hoped that the prosperous and wealthy inhabitants of districts two and seven and nine will never allow these old schoolhouses to stand another year. They are a disgrace to the town and the ground they cover. Many well-to-do farmers in the said district will not suffer them to stand among their fine buildings even as a shelter for their cattle. It's no wonder their children get tired of going to school. That was a number one that I found interesting and interested.
And that looks like that would have appeared to have been the Lincoln School, the Foxes Ridge School, and the Acton Corner School.
No.
All of which are still standing, right?
Okay, why don't we start in the next slide? So, one of the things here, I think everyone knows that back in the 17, early 1800s, Acton was part of the Town of Chapley. Town of Chapley was incorporated in 1785. And Acton was the Weston Parish. And suddenly about 1825, the folks over here on the Acton side of the lake and river started thinking, well, gee, we're getting big enough, why can't we have our own town? And went to town meeting, got turned down. Then, 1828, they tried it again, went down again, I believe. Finally, in 1830, they separated. At the time of the separation, there were 21 one-room schools in the Town of Chapley. When they split, 11 of them stayed with Chap, on the Chapley side, and there were 10 in the Town of Acton in 1830. By 1854, which was the next history book that I could come across, they listed 13 school districts. Not all of them had schools, but there was 13 districts. So, they, one of the things that I found in my research, District 13, which was, they called it the Brady School, but I could find no record of any school being built in that district. Now, this would be the further end of the H. Road. And one of the requirements for a school back in those days was that they needed at least eight students to warrant the cost of a teacher and expenses of running a school.
Eight.
Anytime the students, school population dropped below eight, then all of a sudden, maybe they'd go another year or so with eight or seven, but if it went anyways below that, then they'd close the school and then tuition the kids to adjoining district. So, I could find no records whatsoever, no reference to it or anything in all my research. So, then I believe in 1876, District 6 was split and they formed District 14. This is the Riverside School down on Milton Mills, down on French Street. So, next slide, District 1 is the Hilton Ridge School. It's over on the Fox Ridge Road. And it had been moved back years and years ago and they're jacked up, leveled off, a sloping hill up there and whatnot. But that's still in existence as a residence today. You go up on the Foxes Ridge, on the right-hand side, you'll see, and that was the original schoolhouse. Next slide. District number two, the Lincoln School. This is up the road, right on the corner of Orchard Road and Milton Mills Road. It's the only, I wouldn't say the only one, well, that's separated, it still belonged to the town. It was originally called the Bracket School, and then over the years, it turned around and South Acton School, Bracket Ridge School. So, over the years, in the superintendent's reports, they've listed as different names. But in 1957, it was closed, and they'd built, the kids were all transferred over to the New Consolidated School here in the grounds here. Next slide. District 3 is the Franklin School. This is down on Hubbard's Lane, oh, not Hubbard's Lane, the.
Baker. Baker Lane.
Baker Lane.
It took that down a long time ago.
Excuse me.
Two years ago, yeah. It's still, it's still in there.
And there's a picture of the original school. This other picture was taken, I think, oh.
2010.
2010.
It's still in there.
Yeah. And the folks that bought the property shortly after turned around and was worried about the condition and about possibility of kids getting inside and getting hurt and whatnot, so they chose to tear it down. I'd like to have seen it repaired, but this is one of the things when we have newcomers in town and they don't appreciate the history like some of the local people do. Next slide. In District 4, the Joy School, this is down the Lebanon Road.
Yeah.
And the, what gave me the information about that is it happened to the, down in the Historical Society, somebody many, many years ago wrote a book about the family down there. And so, I was able to read that and get a lot of information out of it. So, it was discontinued in 1906, and the kids were, some of them were tuitioned to the Highland District School in Chapley. District 5 was the Hubbard's Ridge School. This is located up on the southerly side of Route 109, right across the road from the Potting Shed Restaurant. Now, if you, right across the street, you'll see a little kind of greenish-gray old building. It's a garage now. I've tried for a number of times to get Mr. Spitz to allow me to go inside and look it over, but I don't know, it seemed to be a hesitancy there, and I never did get in to see whether that was really the remnants of the old Hubbard School. I think I could tell by looking at the inside, because the schools that I have had a chance to go in, just like the Lincoln School, they turned around and plastered the ceilings and plastered the walls. And so, it depends on how, how the interior construction was. So, District 6, this is the Frog Pond School. Now, this is down on the corner of the Peck Road and the, what used to be called the Farnham Hill Road, now called Milton Mills Road. A few years ago, I was with the Acton Chapley Historical Society, a group of us was cleaning a cemetery near the corner there. And while we were cleaning out the cemetery, one of the gentlemen with us turned around and happened to wander off a little bit in the woods, I don't know whether he was looking for her or maybe just taking some brushing while we're hiding in the corner. He turned around and came across all these big granite blocks. And he came over and got me and come over and looked at it, and it looked like it was the exact size for a school, schoolhouse. And it was right there on the corner of Peck Road and Bell Road. So, I think that's there. But of course, there's nothing else there, you'd have to be looking in the woods for it. District 7, Fox Ridge School. This is up on the eastern side of the Fox Ridge Road. And after it was closed, it was moved back, made into a residence, and it's at, if anybody happened to be up that way, you look for the mailbox with 695 on it. And there's a picture in the book that shows.
One second, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do something real quick.
Keep talking.
I'll be over there in a second.
Keep talking.
Yeah, I don't know whether we have a picture of that. But anyway, in the book, you'll see a picture, as I took a picture a number of years ago, and it's been painted since, and, but it's still used as a, as a reticent. The, that was, yeah, it was closed in 1901, and then they were pushing over to the Hilton Ridge School. District 8, the Garment Road School. Now, I went up and down and I talked with people along the road there, because there's not too many old timers that remember what went on there 100 years ago. But I could not locate any granite foundations or anywhere where it was. And history books mentioned about it being in a field. And the, I think the field's all overgrown and it's all trees and pine trees and whatnot, so, but, so, records show that it was discontinued in 1893. Okay, here's an interesting one, is that our present library was the, called the Acton Corner School. It was started in 1886, but prior to that, come to find out, I found this picture of the original school, which was back further down just before you get down the big hill going up to the transfer station. It'd be just beyond the cemeteries. And that was the original one, and then that was closed in 1885, and then they built a new one up by the townhouse, town hall, and which is now the library. So, you can see the schoolhouse, the town hall, and then the church up on the hill. And that one was closed in 1957 also, and all the students went over to the New Consolidated School. Next one. District 10, here's another one that I went round and round looking, trying to hopefully find some information on, and I didn't come up with anything. So, according to the history, it was located on the right-hand side of the Hopper Road, about quarter of a mile from Route 109. There are no records of when the schoolhouse was built, but it's listed as discontinued in 1886, according to the superintendent's reports. District 11, the Acton Ridge School. The Acton Ridge School was located up on the uptown side of the Acton Ridge Road, about a quarter of a mile from the Mann Road. There are no records of when the schoolhouse was built, but it was discontinued in 1937. It was often referred to as the East Lake School. After this closure in 1937, the students were tuitioned to a school in Newfield until the New Consolidated School was built in 1957. The schoolhouse purchased and turned into a residence, and then in November 2001, they had a fire burn down. Some of the teachers that taught at the school were either Wayland Langley, Marcia Evelyn Bird, Anita Cook, Louise Traptin, Edith Salloway, and Dorothy Ronsky Horn. Next slide. District 12, the Youngs Ridge School. Now, I don't know whether people remember, this is the one where back, the, 2013, the young lady was driving up the Youngs Ridge Road and dropped something on the floor of her car and had to go and pick it up and wasn't paying attention to where she's going and ran right into the front of the school and knocked it off the foundation, broke the chimney down, smashed in the front wall. And this is privately owned, and the lady that owned it went to the code officer to get it fully correct, to rebuild it, and she got turned down. Code officer told her she had to beat all the present code requirements. Well, a number of us got together, we went round and round, and went to the planning board and didn't make any headway and everything, so I ended up, got together with the town lawyer and come up with a change to the zoning ordinance and went to town meeting and changed the zoning ordinance to give an exemption for historic building. Now, because of the way that the two roads come together here, formed a kind of a narrow triangle, and in order to meet the setback requirements, which is only 75 feet from the center of the road, for both roads, meant that that building would have to be pushed back 250 feet into the middle of the field. And we just felt, you know, the old schoolhouses weren't built up in the middle of the field. They had to be closed for winter time, so minimal shoveling. So, she finally got the. So, uh, she finally got the, uh, after the zoning ordinance was changed by the town meeting, she finally got a building permit and spent many, many thousands of dollars of getting it repaired. And, uh, so, uh, it's still there and, uh, a lot of people in the area, uh, refer to it and everything. It's a symbol of the past. Next. District Fourteen. Uh, the past, oh, 13 because as I say, the, uh, there was no, uh, record, uh, of it, uh, the schoolhouse being built there. District Fourteen, Riverside School. Uh, in 1876, District Six was split. Riverside Schoolhouse was built along the banks of San Falls River on French Street by the new school district number fourteen. It was discontinued in 1957. It was sometimes referred to as the Milton Mills School. And, uh, when it was, uh, closed, Mr. Lasky, an next-door neighbor, purchased the school building from the town in 1958 for the sum of $600 and turned it into a garage for his two Snowfighter trucks. In 1984, he sold it to Walter Scott for the sum of $9,900. He just, he didn't make any use of it, but, uh, he was another neighbor and, uh, just wanted to make sure that it stayed as is. Then in 2003, Ted Kryzak, who also lived in a close neighborhood and ran a alternative school, purchased it and had it moved across the street, his property, and he turned it back into a school building for his alter, Turner, alternative school as shown in the above picture. So, uh, so those are the, what, pictures that I have of, uh, of the schools without much research and whatnot. And, uh, do we have anything else, Mike?
He, consolidated.
Oh, yeah, the consolidated school. So, in 1957, of course, I don't know, in the 1950s, the schools were getting kinda, had a number of students in them and, uh, they kept talking about the possibility and finally it came to fruition in 1957. And then they built four little, uh, new school with four classrooms and closed the other four one-room schools. And, uh, but at least they had the kids all together and they could have a little more flexibility in their, uh, teaching and, uh, feeding the kids and whatnot.
Can I... That's Patty's room, the building, isn't it?
That is.
That's what Patty is.
That's Patty's room and Sylvia's room and Norma's room.
Yep.
And the two rooms on the left-hand side over here used to be for, one was for Fifth and Sixth and one was for Seventh and Eighth. And there was a sliding door that separated the two of them so that they could open it up to have school programs and things like that. And a little small section right there in the front that was, uh, the kitchen where the, where they did all the cooking for the...
Yep. Sweetser's office now.
I'm part of my closet.
Okay.
Well, it was.
Was the main office, I heard, at one point, too, right?
When it was first built, there was no main office.
That's the way to build a school, right there. Who changed that?
The principal was a teacher.
Was a teacher, right? Right? Okay.
Next one?
Yeah.
There were no super in them.
And in 1978, really, uh, I think it was 79 and then, uh, turned around and, uh, they added on, the four classrooms were getting, getting, uh, kinda crowded and they wanted more things, so they added on, uh, these other rooms. So, uh... And that went along fine for a number of years and then, uh, it began overcrowding again and finally... Next one? We have what we have today. This was built in 1990, 91? So, but all this information is in the, in the book. And then, like I say, the, uh, do we have any more, Mike?
That's the last slide.
Yeah. So, as I say, the, uh, the remaining chapters is, uh, four or five, uh, of, like I say, stories, uh, from people that, uh, taught for many years ago. And they have some very interesting stories to tell. Uh, one of them, lady turned around and tells about, uh, she was having trouble with one of her students one day, must've been one of the older ones. And so she muckled right onto him and turned around and rustled him to the floor.
Good for her.
Screamed and yelled and kicked his feet and everything and finally got him, uh, calmed down and let him up and made him go sit in it. See, he sat there for, till noon time, went home for lunch and didn't come back. The next morning, he did come back and he behaved himself.
Well, that's when parents disappoint your children.
Today, your parents would be right down there in the office and, you know, what are you doing? What are you doing?
In the, uh, in the place right beside the Acton Corner School, the library now, where the gym is located now, that used to be a board yard. And they had boards and whatever. And I can remember when there were all eight grades in there and my grandmother was teaching there and I was there. And I can remember one time, two big boys hitting in a fight and she went over to the board yard and got a couple of stickins and she came over and she was whacking them and she broke up the fight that way. And she was only about five foot two, so...
Well, the interesting thing here was that they, she goes on to say that, you know, you may wonder how a teacher could turn around and muckle onto a kid and turn around and get him down on the floor like that. She said, "Well, it just so happens that I happen to be six foot tall and 200 pounds." I don't do it.
So, Dick, not only has he presented to you tonight and, uh, he's also reached out to Mary Ellen Blodgett, our middle school social studies teacher, and she teaches main history and she's gonna take his work and make it part of the curriculum. And he's already met with her several times and we're excited to have her in front. So, let's, let's show appreciation to Dick. This is a love, this is a love. He does this because of the passion, you know, not into it for the money.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
But, uh, Dick, I wanted with you, the, uh, main goal here was to provide this information to the kids back. And, uh, that's why I turn around and all proceeds will be going towards fixing up the Lincoln School. And, uh, I have, I'll give you a copy of the, what I sent to the Sleutman.
Yep.
Pressing their support. That, that my goal is to turn around and fix up the Lincoln School and have it available so that the school can use it for teaching purposes. And then also have it available, we'll say, like in the summer, for the Acton Chaplain Historical Society, if they have, wanna have an open house, talk about history and whatnot. And we did it about five years ago and we had a number of people that had gone to that school and they enjoyed coming back to turn around.
I went to that school.
Yeah. But, but as I say, so, uh, I'm open, uh, the Sleutman Act, you know, positively on it. And, uh, so all my proceeds will go to the fund. And to give you an example, what, the book hasn't been out, you know, a few weeks, less than a month, I think, I turn around and, uh, have deposited into the Lincoln School Fund, uh, $520, $40, and then another $144 already. So, the school, uh, the copies of the book are on, uh, amazon.com. And then, uh, there are copies available up at the Acton Public Library.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For us, alright? I'm always in touch with the school and the teacher to teach your kids what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is nice April weather out there. We go back to San Antonio.
It'll be different downtown.
Yeah.
Gotta get out of that.
Probably will. All right. Um, then let's move on now to number four. Now, look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by, um, Mary, seconded by Jeanette. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Five and O. Okay, do you have any, does anybody have any questions for any of the administrative reports in the consent agenda?
Just for Andy, but he's not here.
He's out there plowing, you can hear him.
Yeah.
No, I thought we already had the LEDs in those lights because we did the whole LED...
I know, I know.
But he's saying all exterior lighting has been updated utilizing LEDs, so I thought we already had that.
I think we only did so many.
They didn't change them.
We did so many.
We might catch him till the meeting's over.
Well, yeah. Anybody else have any questions for any of the, um... I was, I was interested in what you were doing, uh, to begin reading circles in the...
Oh, yeah.
In the, yeah, third grade.
Third grade, yeah.
That's, yeah, like that would be really, really cool.
Yeah. Spend a lot of time in that third grade class, getting them ready.
Yep.
Part of the coaching responsibilities.
One thing, which I guess it might be your responsibility, um, I always feel like the children don't, by the time they're in eighth grade, they're afraid to do a presentation, you know, public speaking. But if we made that a thing where kids are always getting up and having to speak, they'll never have that fear. So, I don't know how you could do that. But I think at least, what, twice a year, if the kids could get up in front of their new students or maybe in front of a bigger group even, to get them exposed, it wouldn't be, it's always fearful. I mean, when you get to high school. Yeah. It is. It seems to be horrendous depending on the teacher and what they're doing, but, yeah, it should be an expectation. So, if you could weave that in, that'd be nice.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions or anything from the administrative report? Okay, go right for it.
Okay, so just for superintendent and chair reports, uh, Wildcat Run is this Friday, which is a fundraiser for the PTG. It's, uh, very exciting at the school. We're gonna have, again, we're gonna have to look at the weather. We originally thought the field might be dry, but this might be a game changer. Uh, Andy's like, Andy was pretty sure by Friday the field would be dry. Our plan B is to use the paved surfaces. We'll probably go with plan B on Friday. Uh, we're gonna have K2 go earliest and then, uh, three through five next and then six through eight. It's basically 8:30 for an hour each, brings us into 11:30. And the kids go out, they have kind of a motivational talk up at the front end of this with, uh, some of the PTG parents. I'm sure Whiskers will show up. The kids go out and do their run and the people that sponsor them with all the sneakers on your way out, look left near Cami's room and you'll see all the sponsored sneakers with messages to the runners. And they've sponsored the kids and it's a way of raising funds. So, it's our first time doing it. We're gonna see how it goes and we may modify it a bit. We've learned some things and we'll probably offer it in the fall moving forward instead of the spring when we can be sure things are dry. April break is this Friday. Uh, kids and teachers have a week off from school and when they get back, probably that week, again, I'm glad I haven't sent it out yet, I'll send out the, the letter of when the last day of school will be. Uh, and remember, we're, we're doing the ERDs later and we've kinda got some time back, but, you know, I'm really gonna wait for our implement weather before I can say something like, "I'm pretty sure this is the last day of school." So, glad I kinda held my cards on that one this week. And lastly, I was gonna make the announcement, but the year, I was gonna, my last update is that, oh, I won the States this weekend and I see the coaches here with the kids. I think I'm just gonna give it to you, Jenny. Do you want to just kind of update us briefly on what happened and where we're at and what the future holds for us?
Yep, um, just to give you guys a heads up, the team went to Worlds last year, of course, they came as 16th out of 50 teams and the tower held 560 pounds. Um, this year, they have quite the young team. They're in Division Two, which is sixth through eighth grade, but the divisions are based on the highest grade in the team. We have three sixth graders, three fifth graders, and three fourth graders up against, you know, sixth through eighth grade.
Oh, wow. Three, six.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, two, two fourth, two fifth, three sixth. At regionals, they did very well. What was, what did it hold at regionals, the tower? 390?
Yeah, 395.
395. Then they came back, they, um, the tower builder looked, read at the tower. At States, it held 380, uh, 585, which is, um, what's my mouth, Jenny? 25 pounds more than it at Worlds last year. So, they got first place at regionals, first place at States, and I'm gonna let the kids...
So, 25 more than Worlds last year, but 100 to almost 200 pounds more than the regionals in finals.
Yes.
So, you tweaked it and went back and added 200 pounds?
Yeah.
That's amazing. I didn't get that from you in your emails. Okay.
No, I, there is so much, I...
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty impressive.
So, just stand up and say your name. We do have two, two kids missing. They weren't able to make it on such short notice. So, Jacob, gonna hit you first. Just tell them your, well, of course, I said a second name. Name, grade, and what you do in skit.
Um, my name's Jacob. My, I'm in the fourth grade and I am two people in skit. I am a drummer and the supporter for summer.
Support person.
I am Jamie. I'm sure a lot of you know me. I'm in fifth grade and I was the drummer along with him. And I also helped, um, stack the weights after she launched it, launched the tower.
Um, my name is Sophie and I'm in sixth grade and I was a weight player this year in the skit.
I am JC. I'm also in sixth grade. I was the tower builder and I helped play sweets.
I'm Summer. I'm also in sixth grade and I was the catcher who was playing the game.
So, basically, basically, they're here to ask you guys a question. Sophie, you wanna stand up for the team and ask the same question you asked at town hall a few minutes ago?
Okay. Um, we were wondering if we were allowed to fundraise. Um, here, um, since, um, we will, because we needed, we need, um, money to go on a, uh, road trip to Michigan State's for Worlds competition. Last year, we went and raised enough money to go, but, um, but that was to Iowa and but they changed it every year. It switched between Michigan and Iowa. So, yeah, thank you.
Do you have a goal and is it more or less than Michigan versus Iowa? Michigan's closer than Iowa.
I'll go ahead and answer that. Um, it's about the same. Our goal last year was, I think, 11,600. This year, it's 11,800.
Okay.
Um, even though Michigan's a little bit closer, it really, you know, when you get into a road trip, you still have kinda the same costs. Um, plus what we had talked about last year, building the insurance on the rental vehicles into the fundraising.
You bet.
That came, brought the cost up a bit.
What's your date that you need to get this for sure done by so that you know you can be in Michigan in mid-May, late May?
Well, um...
You got about a month, Jenny?
They want our registration by the 16th. They want, um, the money, uh, the, not the travel money, but, um...
Hold your spot in Michigan.
$6,555 for the housing and food by the 27th. We know we're not gonna get that. But we were able to do it last year and we had someone who was kind enough to put it on their, the fee on their credit card and we paid them back.
You're talking about this month, right?
Yeah. Unfortunately.
The down payment is considered in April, but the event is when, Jenny?
The event, um...
It's in May.
We leave on the 19th, but I think it starts on the 21st. I think it's like a two-day drive, two, two and a half day drive. We could do it in one day, but with these kids, I don't wanna push an 18-hour trip.
No.
So, what did you do at the school last year for fundraisers that you'd like to do again this year?
Um, so, last year...
So last year, state was outdoor, I mean, before the talent show, which was, last year we did a talent, fundraised at the talent show, and I built, and we sold baked goods. And we also did a few bake sales. I remember there was a, there was a dinner or something, supper.
Those were at Town Hall, but yeah, yeah.
That's right.
And then Amy was.
Yeah, whatever fundraisers you can come up with, I see no problem with us.
And I think we ended up donating personally.
The school committee itself donated $100 last year, just from the school committee. And I'm sure we will do that again.
It was each.
Yep. Did we do, we did 500 in all? Or did we do 100 as a group?
I don't remember.
I don't remember. But what did we do last year, we'll do again this year. We'll find it out from you.
You let us know.
And, um. Yeah.
I don't know.
And we'll certainly try to support you in all of your endeavors for raising money, not only as community members, but as a school board and school staff, too.
We already have a potential fundraiser.
Yeah, we already have several potential fundraisers going on. We're doing can drive, basically. We posted that today on the Facebook, What's Up in Acton page. People just, you know, they contact us if they have extra cans, we'll go get them. We did ask them, no working glass, I don't want any kids getting their hands cut.
Are you talking a bottle drive?
Yeah, a bottle drive, can drive.
Would you be at the, like, at the transfer station maybe on a Saturday, and I could bring my, my daughter would bring hers, which is?
I've talked, I've talked with one of the transfer station guys, he's going to okay it with the town, I guess, and they will be allowed to have a table at the transfer station also. We're doing that, we're doing, I believe I just got permission from you today that they're going to do a 24-hour lock-in, where each team member will grab 10 pledges for X amount of dollars per hour, up to 24 hours, and they'll be locked in the gym and cafeteria area, and no electronics. For 24 hours.
We didn't know that. I actually asked my model.
Hey, guys, you just missed a historical presentation of the Acton School's trust being locked in for the weekend. It's soft compared to what used to happen around here, so, God bless them.
Well, congratulations, and we're very proud of you, very proud of you to be representing Acton, Acton School at the, at the world champ, at the world competition. That's great. Thank you for coming and sharing with us.
As a coach, I'm really proud of them, because, I mean, here we are, small town Acton, and this is the second time they're going to Worlds. And that, to me, is just amazing.
It is amazing.
They're the school in Georgia that actually holds the tryouts, and they only take two sixth graders every year, and they cycle through, because once you're on the team, you'll stay on the team. And then the eighth graders groom the sixth graders. So their, their team's amazing. They come in the top six almost every year.
Oh, wow.
So for these kids to be at Worlds with that same caliber team is just amazing.
Yes, great. It's very nice.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you for your coaching. Bring home the gold!
What do they give you?
Strive carefully, it doesn't look like it's a lot of fun out there right now.
Yeah, I got four of them looking too.
Okay, then, let's go on to progress monitoring reports.
Yeah, that's, just updating you on the MEA assessment. We finished last week. We have a few makeups of kids who are absent, so I think those will be wrapped up by tomorrow. I wanted to make sure we had a couple of days cushioned, so that if somebody was absent even this week, that we were able to get them all assessed. We fed the kids breakfast every morning. We had great cooperation from the kitchen staff, so every child who wanted to eat, and that was actually kind of amazing, to have them all sit in there and eat breakfast at the same time. So that was, that was fun. Got them started. I watched in-between testing. Some teachers took their kids outside, took them for a quick walk, and before they sat for two, they didn't do two tests back-to-back, they made sure they had breaks in between. And PTG provided snacks all week during testing time. Second graders the week before went down and hung up signs all through the hallway, encouraging kids to do their best on the test. So it was a, you know, as successful as we could make it, I think. There was a lot going on, but they did well, persevered through the test. Wasn't easy. Third graders, for the first time sitting for that, struggled, not realizing how hard or long that was going to be for them. So we made sure that we had some accommodations written into RTI plans for kids, if they needed a smaller setting, or one-on-one, or extended time, whatever that might be, or breaks while they were sitting for a test. So we tried as many strategies as we could, just to make kids successful with their experience. Yep, so the next thing coming up will be the MEA science, just for fifth grade and eighth grade, and that's after April break. They have two weeks to get that done, and then we'll go into NWEA towards the end of the year, just to get a final measure, that we'll use that data for some planning for next year. So that's where we are with assessments.
Anybody have any questions for?
Some of the middle school kids were so excited about their essay, and so they, they said to Mrs. Scully, "Can't wait until you read my essay." And she's like, "Yeah, I don't get to read your essay." She said, "I get to see your scores and your results," she said, "but I don't get to really read what you wrote." But they were very excited, they thought, some of them were, thought they had done quite well on their essay.
Done well with them.
So, interesting, yeah.
Okay, let's move on to committee reports. Do we have anything from long range tonight?
We did not meet.
Okay. So when we get to policies now, you'll find that you've got quite a little package of policies in here. And I think, I think we'll take the ones for the second meeting first, that we approved for first reading last month. IHBG homeschooling, IGBGA homeschooling participation in school programs, and JEA compulsory attendance. So I'll look for a motion to accept those three policies to be adopted by a second read.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? So those will be adopted and dated as of this date, as adopted. And now, you'll see that the policy committee's been very busy.
Yes.
And I noticed from Kim's report, too, that this pretty much catches us up to where we need to be with the state with what we need for policy, so that's a good thing. So we'll look at now for first reads on JFK, disciplinary removal of students with disabilities. JFKR, disciplinary removal of students with disabilities procedure. Let's take those two first, those two go together. And we'll look for a motion to accept those two policies as a first read. Somebody from the policy committee like to make that a motion?
All right, we'll make a motion for the first read of JFK, disciplinary removal of students with disabilities, and a procedure for JFKR, which is the procedure, first read.
Second it? Didn't you second it? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, then we have JLCB, which is immunization of students. We have JLCC, which is communicable infectious diseases. We have JAR, notification of rights under FERPA. And EFBR, free and reduced price food services procedure, which is, oh, we'll skip that one for now. We'll just take the other three, because that's a different one, yeah. I'll look for a motion to accept those other three as a first reading.
So moved. Second it?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we accept for a first reading, immunization of students, communication affected diseases, and notification of rights under FERPA. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and the last one is just a review, and this is EFBR, free and reduced price food service procedure.
Well, it's a review with changes. Isn't it a review with changes?
Yes, so we just, we'll just vote on.
Revised and reviewed.
Revised. Should say revised.
We just on the bottom, just put revised and.
Revised, okay. So I'll look for a motion to accept EFBR as revised.
Now, who's requiring this, you know?
It's, it's not a requirement.
Need students in grades nine through 12. Why is that even in there?
Because it's part of the.
Part of the nutrition policy.
Policy for the state.
Put it, put it in there like as you would with voting on vocational education at $0 as an article referendum, as an article in our budget.
Because the state says so.
Yeah, the state sends down lists of policies that are required to be in our policy book, and that's what Kim's been working on to keep us, to get us right up to speed, so that all of, all of our policies that are required by the state are in fact in our book.
Right, it's not just for our school.
So we can't do the peanut butter and jelly sandwich anymore?
We changed that locally with a meeting, a commander attended, maybe Jeanette, maybe some others, well, well over a year ago.
Because of the peanut allergy?
No, the alternative meal. The cheese sandwich, and we moved away from that, so there is no more alternative meal, it's just the meal, that's the meal that's being.
Shaming.
So, yeah, so.
Now our policy reflects it. Our practice has reflected that for about 10 months.
That's what I thought, so I was like, what, that's still in there? Okay, that's why.
So did I have a motion to accept that as revised?
Yes. Revised and reviewed.
Revised and reviewed.
Reviewed and revised. I don't know. I think we reviewed it, then we revised it, so.
Well, it's revised as of this date. All those in favor, review, revise, review, whatever.
I just have a question back on the immunization of students. So hopefully, everyone here at Acton is supposed to be immunized versus some schools don't?
Well, there's a, there was a state, I don't know where the conversation at the state went, right? But there was, there was a push for a state mandate that everybody be immunized. I don't know where that went with the legislature. Of course, we're not out of the session, so I don't know where that's going to go.
I know, but like, you know, when I brought my kids, I had to show them that they were immunized. And then when I hear that there are kids in third, fourth grade, you know, are getting measles, I'm like, wait, how did they even get into school?
Because there's reasons why people don't want their kids to have immunization.
They can get measles outside of school.
Right. Philosophical reasons, religious reasons, I don't want to do it reasons.
We require it.
There's three things.
So now we require it.
We require it.
We require our home school students to take courses à la carte with us at the same level that was in there, too.
Okay, yeah. No, I just want to make sure they're all immunized, because my grandchildren will be coming here, and I don't need this.
My son had the Whoopin' Talk booster on time and ended up with it in fifth grade. That last go-around, seven years ago. You know, and I'm like, he's been, he can't, but he did. It happens.
We voted on that.
Did we not? Yes, we did.
Okay.
Good, because Jen's going to take it from the, okay.
Okay, new business.
So I've got two quick, quick things, and then maybe we can make a move to go into executive session and let some of the folks here go home, and we'll wrap up some business. The first one is a GT update I wanted to give you as part of formal board communication that Adrian Coley, who is our current GT teacher, as you've been updated, will be leaving. She'll be leaving, Friday will be her last day here at Acton. So she'll be moving out to Ohio with her husband, who has a job at Ohio State, and her growing family, and we wish her well. That leaves a long-term GT position open. Well, we've, we've filled that with Pat Reeves. So in the meantime, Pat Reeves and I have talked a couple times, Pat will be in the Monday after vacation. We're going to run GT as we have been running GT, because the kids are already in a program, and it would be unfair to just change it because we have a new teacher for the kids. But Pat's going to advise, advise, revise, review, what we're doing with GT, and help consult administration on what the new model might look like. I've done a ton of research since I knew that we were going to have a change in staff. There's several models, there is no real recommended. There's push-in, there's pull-out, and then there's blended. I think the blended is the way we'll go. I think having some push-in services for some academic areas makes sense. I think it depends on who the students are. The best advice I got from some, some people were hire the right person, give the person some parameters, and then back off and give them the space to design what's right for the kids that you have, because the kids will change over time.
Yep.
I thought that was awesome. So there's very few GT programs that are full-time in a school this size, so I think this is just a peach of a position. And I told one of the state consultants who also teaches GT classes, for the GT endorsement, you know, look for our ad, because anybody in Southern Maine that's paying attention would want to probably apply for this position, and I need a really good person to fill it. So that's where we are with GT.
Couldn't have a better substitute.
Yeah, Pat's going to do great. I've talked to her a couple times, so she's, she's all set to come back.
I saw her yesterday, she was ready, she's ready to roll.
Do you, do you want to give me some potential dates for a Sanford High School visit? I did receive some email feedback from you, but I didn't ask for dates. If you have your calendar, can you tell me what dates just don't work? I'll kind of walk you through the process, and I'll talk with Superintendent Nelson in Sanford. He can do an afternoon tour of the new Sanford High School facilities. We could try to dovetail it with maybe one of their meetings. If we did it with one of our meetings, we'd either have to have a workshop, or we'd have to have it on our, we'd have to do it during our May meeting, but our May meeting would be down in Sanford, so that's a little, little tough. I don't know, I don't think we can do that. I think we could have our meetings here.
Right.
So in May, just curious, let's go to the 6th, that's the first full week of May. I would recommend that any day but Wednesday or Thursday. How about Monday, Monday, Thursday that week, does that work?
No, you just said Monday, Thursday.
Yeah, Monday, Thursday does work. Actually, Monday, Thursday works for me.
What time are you talking?
Talking after school for them. They want the kids out of the building for us to get a tour.
So what time?
2:20, so we could probably be down there 2:30-ish.
2:30.
2:30-ish, either the 6th or the 9th, and I can keep going out different weeks where I know my availability, okay?
I can't do it the 6th.
The week of the 13th, except for the 15th, is wide open. So you've got Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, could do a Friday.
So May 7th, can you do?
I have a cohort leader meeting that begins at quarter of 3:00.
Oh, you said that's not good?
That's not good.
I'm sorry. You said Monday, Thursday.
What about the 9th?
Hold on, the 9th is good.
The 9th could happen.
Thursday, the 9th.
That's good for me.
Does that work for everybody? Let me check with him, let me have a backup date, too. Okay, so I'm going to put in 2:30.
2:30. That'll work. We'll make it work.
Okay, and I'm going to take one more as backup, because I haven't talked to the superintendent about these dates yet. Let's go out to a week after. How does the 16th look for people? Just curious.
What time is that?
This would all be 2:30. We're going to call it a 2:30. They get out at 2:20?
Yeah.
Well, that building probably takes a while to empty, so, right?
Those kids are just coming out the doors.
So what, once we nail down, I'll give you some specifics. We have a date, when I say 2:30, I might be like, hey, wait till 2:40, because they're telling me you're not going to get in. But I'm just trying to get a relative area, so it would be the 16th at 2:30 if.
You guys know where to park?
Okay, so that's my backup date, okay. Once we secure one of these two dates, I will get back to you. I'll get back to you with specifics about parking times and all that. Okay?
Email us, thanks.
Yeah, you bet. Okay, but that's good, though, because I got two dates to work with now.